Okay, we'll give this another shot. Good evening, everyone. Today's January 22, 2020. The first meeting of the 24th Council will come to order. All councilors are present this evening. I'd like to start the meeting off with a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Jones. But in our moment of silence, as everyone here knows, this is our first meeting returning without our beloved City Counselor Sanchez. So please, as we're reflecting, please think of Counselor Sanchez. I can tell all the councilors are getting better at it. So with that, we actually have a brief announcement from our Director Yada, Stephanie Yada.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the Council Office, the Counselor Sanchez family, and Elaine Romero, of very, very great thank you to everybody who has supported us during this time, especially Mayor Keller and his administration, Isaac Padilla, Chief Dow and the staff at Albuquerque Fire Rescue, Chief Guyer and members of the Albuquerque Police Department, the management and staff at the Convention Center and Kiva Auditorium, and Mr. Harvey and CJ over at the Ladera Golf Course. We thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Yada. Yes, so obviously, we want to thank the Council staff as well, you know, everyone to put this together. I'm just going to kind of say a personal thing real quick about Counselor Sanchez is that, you know, something that gave me solace in all this because obviously, he left us way, way too young. And it was real interesting because if you knew Counselor Sanchez, you knew that he loved JFK, right? And, you know, I said to myself, I was telling my husband, that if you ask Counselor Sanchez, Counselor, if you're going to pass away at 83, and you know that you're going to have lots of family and loved ones and people who remember all the good work you did, would you want that? Or would you want to go out like JFK at 63? I think he would pick the going out like JFK at 63. He really admired him, so.
Thank you, Council President Penya. I am Elaine Romero, as all of you know, but for those that don't, I have worked with Counselor Sanchez for the last 14, near 15 years. And I'd like to echo what our Director, Ms. Yada, has said. Thank you for all of your support, especially for me on a personal level, as I know that all of you are hurting for our loss as well. I did ask if I could say a few words, and I've put a picture up of Counselor Sanchez. Antonia Rivera, we received an amazing delivery today from Antonia. She is the founder of Every Ability Plays and helps with parks throughout the city for people with special needs. She worked very closely with Ken. In fact, I think she started her efforts with Counselor Sanchez. She has brought balloons for each of you councilors tonight to release after your meeting in memory of Ken. So I did want to let you know about that. If you saw me walking around with a big black bag, that's what they are for after the meeting. And again, thank you, as well as I knew Counselor Sanchez, he loved and appreciated every single one of you and to the administration as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Elaine. And I know some of Counselor Sanchez's family is here this evening, and I was just wondering, I don't know procedurally, if we could actually just go straight to that final action item? We're good with that? So if... You're still waiting on some of the family members? Okay, so then we'll... Okay. Okay. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from Council staff at the sign-up table. The Council will take a break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening if needed. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. So we are, before we go to the election of... I guess we could just go ahead and do that. So it doesn't matter. So we'll actually go now to the election of President and Vice President. Okay. So the first item will be is the election of the President. So I will take nominations for President. If and after there is a second round, there is not a majority vote selecting one individual, I will make a motion to reopen the floor for nominations. So I would right now make a motion to, for Pat Davis as President.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? Three times, right. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? With not, if hearing no other nominations, we move by...
Acclamation.
Yeah, move by acclamation? So all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Congratulations, Counselor. So did you want to take over from here and just do the... I think it'd be appropriate.
Madam President, Madam President, if you don't mind, would you just continue the rest of the elections, and then we'll swap if that's okay?
Okay.
Since you've got us rolling here.
Okay, sounds good. So election of the Vice President. I will now take nominations for Vice President. If after the second round, there is not a majority vote selecting one individual, I'll make a motion to reopen the floor for nominations. I will now make a nomination for Counselor Gibson for Vice President.
Second.
There's a motion and a second? There's a motion and a second? Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? So I think...
I move by acclamation?
Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Congratulations, Counselor Gibson. So then we are on election of Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I will now take nominations for Chair of the Committee of the Whole. If after the second round, there is not a majority vote selecting one individual, I will make a motion to reopen the floor for nominations.
Madam President, I'd like to nominate Counselor Benton.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second for Counselor Benton as Committee of the Whole Chair? All those in favor say... Well, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? If not, somebody want to close that by saying, making a vote for, by acclamation?
I'd like to make a motion to elect Counselor Benton by acclamation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Congratulations, everyone. So then approval of committee appointments, new President.
Madam Chair, I make, or Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the committee appointments.
Second.
Actually, that would be... Is that okay? So move approval of the interim committee appointments as distributed by staff, but we're not doing that this evening? Or you are?
Madam President or Madam Chair, in fact, we have proposed to introduce some interim committee assignments so that the committees can function. We have some vacancies posted in the proposed committee assignments for any committees that are not scheduled to meet before the middle of February, which would be after the mayor's deadline for announcements, and if we need to continue those, we will. But we've put some interim appointments in there for the committees that need to meet before then.
Okay, so there's a motion, and you second that, I'm assuming?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. So we'll just take a quick little second just to switch seats here with Counselor Davis.
And thank you to all of you. We appreciate it very much. Counselor Penya, I just want to say thank you very much for your leadership for us. You, as it turns out, may in fact have the longest term as City Council President because of our extended terms, and because we extended this year to accommodate the time for us to grieve Counselor Sanchez. And you have certainly led us through some of those. And so I want to say thank you for the way you've led us through that and worked with us all, and we appreciate your leadership very much. And to Counselor Borrego as well as our Vice President, and I think she has a brief presentation. Counselor Borrego.
Yes, Counselor Penya, I didn't realize at our last meeting that we were going to be receiving our little gabbles and committee presentations or plaques, I guess. And so I failed to bring this little gift with me at our last meeting, and it is for you on behalf of myself and the councilors, although they didn't know about it, but I want to include everyone in this, just on behalf of your presidency and your leadership and bringing Netflix in and helping us do some amazing things with Topgolf and some other things on the West Side, Ben Keith, the jobs for the West Side, and just kind of your vision. So I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego and the rest of the Council. I really appreciated having an opportunity to serve as a leadership role and then also having the opportunity to be the first Council in history to have all female leadership. And then, you know, this year, obviously, we're going to have a majority City Council with women, mostly women. So anyway, this is a great time in the city of Albuquerque. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penya, and thank you, Counselor Borrego. Moving on, next up on our list are proclamations and presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Borrego and company to introduce and read their first proclamation recognizing the Women's March.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think someone else is reading the first two.
Yeah.
So is that Counselor Penya?
Yeah. So do we have the folks here? If you guys can make your way to the podium?
Oh.
Yeah. So I'll get, I'll go ahead and get started reading it. And, you know, congratulations on a successful event on Saturday.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I couldn't be there. I had my goddaughter's gender reveal party, which is a thing now that I'm learning, so...
You were there in spirit. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. So whereas the New Mexico Women's March champions an intersectional platform known as Unity Principles that recognizes the connected nature of our struggles and a vision of collective liberation, and whereas immigrant justice is at the forefront of the 2020 New Mexico Women's March, which upholds belief in immigrant and refugees' rights regardless of status or country of origin, and the belief that the migration is a human right, no human being is illegal, and...
Whereas the 2020 New Mexico Women's March prioritizes environmental rights standing by our environment and climate's protection and the intrinsic value of our land and natural resources over gain and greed, especially at the risk of public safety and health. And whereas reproductive rights are a foundational principle of the state and national Women's March asserting our people do not accept any federal, state, or local rollbacks, cuts, or restrictions in our ability to access quality reproductive health care services, birth control, HIV/AIDS care and prevention, or medically accurate sexual education, and...
Whereas all people regardless of race, disability, or sexual orientation should be free and able to care for and nurture their diverse families in safe and healthy environments, free from structural impediments, and it is our society's moral imperative to dismantle gender and racial inequalities permissive to domestic violence within the justice system. And whereas it is the obligation of our people to uplift, expand, and protect the rights of our LGBTQIA, gay, lesbian, bi, queer, trans, or gender nonconforming brothers, sisters, and siblings, thereby empowering people with control of our own bodies and allowing freedom from gender norms, expectations, and stereotypes, and...
Whereas New Mexico's Women's March supports women and all workers' rights to pay equity, access to affordable childcare, sick days, healthcare, paid family leave, and healthy work environments, and workers' rights to organize around the principles of a living wage. And whereas the Women's March advocates for access, inclusion, independence, and the full enjoyment of citizenship at home and around the world for disabled and LGBTQIA communities.
And whereas civil rights, including voting rights, freedom of religion, speech, and protections for all citizens regardless of race, gender, age, or disability, are central to the well-being of a people and society, and our rights of the New Mexico and National Women's March unfailingly defends. Be it proclaimed that the Council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby recognizes January 19, 2020, New Mexico Women's March and honors the movement's advocacy for the New Mexico's women, immigrant, and LGBTQIA people, their families, and communities.
Thank you so much. I would like to thank the Council members, Councilwoman Borrego and Councilwoman Penya and everybody else up here. It really touches the heart to see such good leadership and such good moral, ethical leadership leading Albuquerque. I just have to say I've been touched to no extent just watching the passing of power here. Just the way democracy works, it really is humbling. Thank you so much for that smooth transition, and thank you so much for all your support for women's rights. Women's rights are human rights. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Ladies, you can join us up here if you'd like, and we'll give you your proclamations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Now I have to learn how to say "Mr. President" instead of "Madam President," so forgive me if I screw up, but...
It would say the first.
In the spirit of the last proc that we just delivered, I'd like to make the observation that we went from the first all-women leadership on Council, both President and Vice President, females, to now we have an all-queer leadership. You as President, myself as Vice President. So hooray for us.
Well, we, he's honorary, but they... Don't ask him what that means. On that note, we'll turn this over to Counselor Penya.
So which one, Council President, do you have first?
You know, next up, Counselor Penya, I believe you have a presentation for the Albuquerque isotopes.
Yes, okay. I had both, and I have the West Side as well, so... Okay, so the folks from isotopes, if you can come up to the front, and let me see all the names that we have here. So we have Michael Montoya, he's the Community Relations Manager, Cara Hayes, the Director of Retail Operations, Kevin Collins, the Director of Public Relations, and we have the manager, general manager, correct, Mr. John Trob here this evening. I know we didn't have your name, but I just wanted to say that before I get started reading the proclamation is that you guys have just done a phenomenal job there, and I know it's attributed to the leadership, but more importantly, any good leader is backed by some wonderful people that really make them look good. So congratulations to all your work. Whereas on December 9, 2019, minor league baseball named the Mariachis de Nuevo México, also known as Albuquerque Isotopes, as the Copa de Diversión Fun Cup Award winners for the second consecutive year. And whereas the Albuquerque Isotopes receive this prestigious honor based on their contributions of more than 200,000 to local Hispanic organizations while partnering with dozen local Hispanic community organizations, experiencing notable attendance increases netting the largest retail revenue generated from licensed products in park and online, remaining in the top two participating teams with the highest commercial partnership revenue, investing the most marketing dollars into the Copa-specific campaign amongst all participating teams. And whereas Albuquerque Isotopes Mariachi de Nuevo México promotion was chosen the best of all 72 teams who participated in the competition in 2019. And whereas the Mariachi de Nuevo México hosted five popular exceptionally well-attended theme nights, including Selena Night, the Low Rider Night that successfully appealed to the Hispanic community both on and off the field. And whereas to the innovativeness of Mr. John Trob and his brilliant, might I say again, brilliant staff at the Isotopes Park, the excitement of the Mariachi de Nuevo México theme nights remains at the forefront of New Mexico households' list of family-friendly must-dos. Be it proclaimed that the Council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby congratulate Albuquerque Isotopes Mariachi de Nuevo México for their outstanding achievement of hitting a consecutive homerun for Albuquerque. Congratulations.
Mr. Council President, members of the City Council, first, we definitely want to extend our condolences for the passing of Counselor Ken Sanchez. The city is slightly, it's just not the same place without him. So first and foremost, we want to extend that. Secondly, on behalf of myself, Michelle, Cara, John, and Rebecca, the entire Isotopes organization, our owner, Ken Young, we just want to thank you all for this prestigious honor for the second year in a row. These awards mean, the Copa Awards, the proclamations, they mean just as much to us as I hope they do to the city of Albuquerque. We don't do these promotions for acclamations. We do them to make sure everybody knows that Isotopes Park is a place for everybody and that the Mariachis are really what New Mexico and Albuquerque are all about, and establishing this bond that we've had with the city of Albuquerque for the last 18 years now, going back to 2003 and beyond, really, a couple of years. It's just been the best partnership we could have ever asked for, and we have a lot planned coming up in 2020. In fact, our very first game of the season at home is going to be a Mariachi's game, so that proves to what a testament Mariachi's mean to not only us personally, but I think the city as well. And we cannot wait to welcome our 10-millionth fan through our gates in 2020. That should happen sometime during the season, and it just, we just couldn't, can't thank the Council, the city, the fans, and the state enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If you want to work your way this way to receive your proclamation. Yes, actually, I think we have somebody from the West Central Community Group here, Mr. Luis Hernandez and Melissa. Welcome. I'm going to get started as you guys are making your way to the front. Whereas Albuquerque West Side Day at New Mexico Legislature was founded by Representative Mo Miestes in conjunction with the West Central Community Development Group in 2007. And whereas West Side legislators unify in solidarity on this day each year to bring awareness to key issues that are important to West Side schools, businesses, and neighborhoods. And whereas students and the community members from boundaries in between both southern and northern edges of Bernalillo County line west of the river gather for a rally in the Capitol Rotunda to celebrate their pride of the West Side. And whereas this year's participating West Side schools are Trisco Heritage Academy, Cibola High, Mark Armiho Academy, South Valley Academy, Ernie Pyle Middle School, Harrison Middle School, Truman Middle School, Alamosa Elementary, Carlos Ray Elementary, Chaparral Elementary, George I. Sanchez Collaborative Community School, Horizon Academy, West, Kit Carson Elementary, Lavalan Elementary, S.R. Marmon Elementary. And whereas over 700 West Side Day participants are introduced to the legislative process and are provided with civics class, a scavenger hunt, a tour of the Capitol, State Capitol Building, and whereas West Side Day participants are given the opportunity to meet with their respective legislators and local elected officials to urge their support on issues that are significant to them. And whereas the volunteer board members of the West Central Community Development Group and the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors should radiate with pride as they have successfully assisted Representative Antonio Miestes in organizing this, this ever annual, on every annual basis for the last 12 years. And whereas the 12th Annual Albuquerque West Side Day will be held on Thursday, February 28, 2019, in the State Capitol Building in Santa Fe, New Mexico. Be it proclaimed by the Council, the governing body of the city of Albuquerque, hereby declares Thursday, January 30, as the 13th Annual Albuquerque West Side Day. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. City Council President, City Councilors, I just want to thank you. My name is Luis Hernandez. I am one of the board members of the West Central Community Development Group, and...
Melissa Sanchez, also a board member with the West Central Community Development Group.
And we, you know, we just want to share our appreciation with the City Council for your support of the West Side Day. This is the 13th Annual West Side Day. We're very fortunate to be able to take over 600, 700 students from Albuquerque-area West Side schools for an experience that they otherwise may not be able to have. It was explained in the, in the protocol that they'll get a civics class, they'll be able to do a scavenger hunt up at the State Capitol. More importantly, they're going to get an opportunity to get to visit with our legislatures. They'll be able to participate in a question-and-answer program, and they'll get to see what the process is like. So again, we want to thank you, and we also like to invite you all to join us. We will start the day with a rally in the Rotunda at 9:00 AM. Then we'll have a question-and-answer on both the House and Senate floors. 10:00, we'll do a civics class at 11:00 AM, and then lunch, and then, of course, we'll have a reception at the Rio Chama at 5:00 PM, and we'd like to invite you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Melissa?
I think that covered everything.
I just want to add that it's not really in the proclamation, but this is really nonpartisan, so there's the support from both sides of the aisle, and everybody's very supportive of this effort throughout the years, and you guys just really do an outstanding job. I know it takes quite a bit of money to get this accomplished... I know it takes quite a bit of money to get this accomplished, and you guys do it on a volunteer basis, and you actually, you know, get the money needed to take that many kids up there. So congratulations, if you want to make your way.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Counselor Borrego and Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This particular proclamation is for a business that is located in Counselor Harris's district. And it is for a gentleman who owns Albuquerque Self-Storage, Mr. Martinez. And I'm trying to find my notes here so I can know exactly what I'm reading. Here it is. Okay, thank you. And one of his relatives approached me on this, and I spoke with Counselor Harris about it. This gentleman is blind, and he's owned this particular business for quite a long time. So we thought that it was appropriate for him to receive something. And he's not here tonight to receive it because he is, you know, he does have a disability. And it's not, he's not able to be here, but we will ensure that he receives it. So I will start. Whereas the City of Albuquerque wishes to acknowledge Harold Martinez's hard work and dedication as the owner of Albuquerque Self-Storage. And whereas on September 1st, 2019, Mr. Martinez celebrated his 40-year anniversary as the sole owner of Albuquerque Self-Storage. And whereas Mr. Martinez worked three jobs to secure base funding for his business endeavor, a business which boomed in the '70s. And whereas several small business loans helped carry him to completing his business goals. And whereas in 1988, Mr. Martinez originally bought the land at 13041 Central Northeast to start his business, and at the same time, Mr. Martinez farmed the land. And...
Whereas since the original property purchase, Mr. Martinez grew his business to include 500 storage lockers and 300 outdoor storage area. And whereas Mr. Martinez began and expanded his business with three employees, two of whom still work alongside him, and the third being his delivery, his dearly departed wife, Ms. Helen Martinez. And whereas Mr. Martinez has succeeded past several losses, including the loss of his eyesight at a very young age. However, these losses have not deterred him from managing a sustainable business and regularly enjoying time and his customers. And whereas citizens of Albuquerque can always call and hear Mr. Martinez's friendly voice as he greets them with "storage." Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, hereby applauds Mr. Harold Martinez for his contributions to the city as a local businessman and familyman, and for his success, successes, and the pride he shows in his community. And additionally recognizes that September 1, 2019, was the 40th anniversary of Albuquerque Self-Storage. And I'll just say one thing about Mr. Martinez. I believe he lives in Counselor Borrego's district. He used to live in Fort Hills. And when I was running for reelection, I think one of those times, I rang his doorbell, and I think I announced myself or something, and I came in and I walked upstairs, and there's this blind gentleman sitting there. And I said, "Oh, hello." And I looked at my walk list, "Mr. Martinez, this is Don Harris. I'm your City Council." He says, "I know exactly who you are." And he has a very sharp and inquiring mind, and, boy, he had a lot of questions. And it was just a real honor to be able to spend that time with him that evening, and I remember it fondly. So I just wanted to say that, and we look forward, it's too bad he can't be here, but I understand why. And I just want to say, if he's listening, congratulations for being such a great businessman for so long.
And we will ensure that he receives his proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors. Next up is our Economic Development Discussions. I'm going to invite Ms. Deirdre Firth up from Economic Development and her team and a whole bunch of other people, I think, eventually, to come tell us a little bit about two presentations. And I promise we won't do this in every meeting, but after this, I think we're going to arrange the agenda just a little bit, if it's okay with other counselors, and bring up the Economic Development Action items that relate to these presentations while we have these guests in town tonight, and so that we don't have to keep them here till the end of the evening after their presentation. But Ms. Firth, is that okay? We'd like to invite you up, and we'll let you pick who goes first.
Good evening, Counselors. It's good to see you tonight. Tonight, we do have two different proposals before you, and one of which I will talk about, and the other one I will have my director, Cynthia Harmiyo, talk about. I'll talk about Kairos Power. We do, in Albuquerque, present you with opportunities for companies that bring in a wide variety of options for our residents and a different job skill sets for our residents. And tonight, you're going to hear about two that are really very different. The first one, Kairos Power, is for a highly advanced scientific research and development project. Kairos Power is a California-based engineering, technology, and research company launched out of a broad research effort at U.S. universities and national laboratories. It was founded to accelerate the development of a clean, safe, innovative technology that has the potential to transform the energy landscape nationally and internationally. The company is requesting $125 million in city-issued industrial revenue bonds. City IRBs are issued to support eligible economic development projects that meet established goals and plans. The company is responsible for funding the purchase of the bonds. No city funds are utilized to purchase or pay off the bonds, and no city credit is used to enhance the bonds. The project will be the operation for the research, development, and testing of advanced salt coolant technology and related systems out at Mesa del Sol. They will focus on engineering development of technology to utilize low-pressure fluoride salt as a coolant and not in a novel advanced nuclear reactor based on synergies between fuel source coolant and passive safety mechanisms. It's important to note that nuclear material will not be utilized on site. This project represents more than $125 million in private sector investment, and the city's economic development fiscal impact analysis has showed that there will be a positive fiscal impact on the community over the term of the project. Kairos Power has 67 high-paying economic-based jobs at salaries over $100,000 each annually. And they will be occupying a building that has been vacant off and on since Josh Solar left. Kairos is also requesting $1 million in City Local Economic Development Act funds. The state has proposed $4 million in state LEEDA funds for which the city would act as fiscal agent. Each of these projects represents a different opportunity for Albuquerque and our residents, and each requires a different level of investment to secure them for our community. We would really like to express our appreciation for our partners in economic development at AED, Albuquerque Economic Development, the State Economic Development Department, and the New Mexico Partnership. We would also like to express our appreciation to City Council staff for helping us arrange the scheduling of these projects in a manner that helped us move forward because they were both on very fast-moving cycles.
Thank you, Ms. Firth. And while we're talking about Kairos here, Ms. Harmiyo, I believe we have some other folks from the company that are here as well, is that right?
We do indeed. We have representatives from the company who are here, as well as their consultants. And they would be happy to tell you why they selected Albuquerque and what their plans are, if the council wishes to hear that at this time.
Ms. Firth, if it's okay, would you give us the presentation on the other item as well, the other economic development item, and then we'll call up those folks in each of the bills that relate to those projects?
Council President, Counselors, thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations and welcome to our new City Councilor, Brooke Basson, and let you and your staff know that we are happy to meet with you and brief you about the workings of our department and how we are happy to assist with economic development projects in your district, which actually has some of the community's leading companies along the North I-25 corridor. Tonight, Counselors, Deputy Firth mentioned that we are bringing two economic development projects to you for your consideration and approval. Like Deirdre just said, they are very different from one another. They offer opportunities for individuals with different skills. And I'm here to talk to you about Fanyel, Inc. The first, or rather, the second is for a 700-person customer service center to be located in the middle of the community in the North I-25 corridor. Fanyel, Inc. provides a broad array of business process solutions to other companies and government entities, from customer care to technical support, and currently employs more than 5,500 individuals across the country. Fanyel is planning to sign, rather, I believe they already did, a 10-and-a-half-year lease of 47,806 square feet at the existing office building located at 4420, the I-25 Way. The project is very fast-moving, and Fanyel intends to have the space operational, actually, and I believe they already do by the end of January 2020, so the end of this month. Now, Fanyel will bring, will be servicing various clients in this space, including a major healthcare company. Fanyel will bring employment opportunities for over, for 700 customer service employees to the local community, as well as occupy a previously vacant office space. Fanyel tonight is requesting $100,000 in Local Economic Development Act funding from the City of Albuquerque and $400,000 from the State of New Mexico to help offset their rent payments. The city, of course, would act as a fiscal agent for the state funds. The fiscal impact analysis conducted by UNM's Bureau of Business and Economic Research shows an incredible positive fiscal return to the city over the 10 years of the project. Fanyel will actually be paying approximately an average of $14 an hour, more than $1 an hour more than the previous tenant, Seitel. And also, we do have the company representative. We have Senior Vice President, Mr. Jeremy Ogle, here to my left. And we also have Ann Marie Collins, who is an Executive Vice President with Saville's Commercial Real Estate, here to answer any questions as well. And also want to mention that we have Chris Mirhead, our bond attorney, who can answer any questions regarding the project participation agreements for both projects.
Thank you, Ms. Harmiyo, Ms. Firth. Thank you so much for that. If there's, unless there's objection from the council, I'm going to propose we take the action items on these items up first while we have folks here. And so I'm going to move 091. 091 authorizes the issuance and sale of Albuquerque IRB for Kairos Power project in the maximum amount of $125 million to provide funds to finance the acquisition, renovation, development, improvement, and equipping of facilities for advanced energy technology research and development at Mesa del Sol. I move a do pass. Thanks. And so before we go to public comment on this, Ms. Harmiyo, I believe we do have some folks from the company that wanted to tell us really briefly on their behalf, sort of what they see in Albuquerque and what they wanted to do. Would you introduce our guests really quickly?
Certainly. We have Ed Blanford, who is the Chief Technology Officer and co-founder of Kairos Power. We have Melinda Davenport, who is the Director of Marketing and Communications at Kairos Power. And we have Mike Butler, who is the Director of Compliance Solutions for ADP. And John Longshore, who is Principal Vice President of Innovation of Global Location Strategies. And also with us, we have Jocelyn Rodriguez, who is the Director of Organizational Development at Kairos Power.
Thanks. Could we ask them all to stand just to enter, so we know who they are and say thank you for choosing Albuquerque for your project? Ms. Harmiyo, if any of them want to speak...
We also have John Longshore. Forgive me. Thank you.
Would you like me to invite them up?
Ms. Harmiyo, if they have something they want to briefly share with us, we'll do that, and then we'll go to public comment and move these items.
Mr. Counselor, Mr. Council President and City Counselors, my name is Ed Blanford. I am the Chief Technology Officer and co-founder of Kairos Power. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight. Just quickly want to address the reasons why we've chosen Albuquerque. We're very excited about coming to the City of Albuquerque. As a former faculty member of the University of New Mexico, I can attest to the quality of the workforce here and really the exciting opportunities that the city brings. We want to thank you for addressing our LEEDA and IRB application expeditiously. We're very appreciative of that, and we're very excited for coming. So if there's any questions, I'd like to open it up.
Ms. Blanford, thank you for being a part of UNM, leaving for a little while, seeing our value, and bringing your company back. That means an awful lot. It says a story we ought to be telling more, so thank you very much.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the other public comment on this item. Up next, Mr. David Buckholz.
Good afternoon, Counselors. David Buckholz from the Rhodey Law Firm. I must say, it's a little melancholy to be here tonight without my friend Ken Sanchez, but I'm glad to see all of you. We're here representing Kairos Power and just would stand for any legal questions, if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Buckholz.
Thank you.
Next and last, Peter Kelton.
Also here on behalf of Kairos Power, here for any legal questions.
We didn't get any before, I bet we don't get any now. Thank you for being here nonetheless. Counselors, any comments or questions before we go to the administration? Counselor Borrego.
And I'm not sure who to ask this question to, but regarding, and I've done a little bit of kind of research about exactly how the power works and sort of with the salt. And is this for nuclear power? Is this what this is intended for? Because I'm not really totally understanding. I mean, is it intended to eventually provide?
That's correct. So the technology is for nuclear power. The testing that we're going to be doing here in the City of Albuquerque is non-nuclear testing. So it's similar to what you would see in concentrated solar technology using these high-temperature salts.
So are you actually developing the sort of like salt chamber as I imagine it? Is that what this is? I mean, you're creating those little salt enclosures? Is that, just so I understand?
Yeah, so a nuclear power plant like many electricity generation technologies has a number of components. The components that go into this plant require qualification testing, and the facility that will be put in here in Albuquerque is going to be doing that type of non-nuclear testing. So it's really qualifying the components that make up the technology.
And so my question is, because I'm a little bit familiar with the nuclear storage that we have down south. So who actually inspects your facility as time goes on?
Oh, so the, this is a non-nuclear facility, so it really have to meet OSHA requirements and meet city permitting requirements.
Okay, so it doesn't involve the nuclear portion of it? It just creates the sort of enclosures, I guess, for that?
That's correct. And it's an extension of the type of work that we currently do in our California headquarters as well, so it's an extension of those activities.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Seeing none, I will move the floor sub for 01991 that was provided by staff. And we have a second, Counselor Harris, any discussion? All those in favor of the floor sub say yes? And that item is on the table. From the administration, any comment, question, anything addition? Ms. Harmio and Ms. Firth usually do this well, so thank you very much. Counselors, seeing any other? The motion on the floor is to pass 091 as substituted. All those in favor say yes. All opposed? Hearing none, that item passes. Thank you. Next up is the companion piece to this. I'll introduce 092, approving a project involving Kairos Power LLC pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and City Ordinance 0410 to support the acquisition, renovation, development, and improvement of research and development in Albuquerque and authorizing the execution of that project. I move a do-pass. And a second for Counselor Harris. At this one, I don't, we have comment, we have the same folks available again to answer any questions. Counselors, any questions, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes? Any opposition? Hearing none, that item passes. Thank you very much. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to Counselor Basson, 090.
Thank you. This 090 is approving a project involving Fanyel Inc. pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and City Ordinance FS 0420 to support the rehabilitation and operations of a customer service contract center located in Albuquerque, authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and other documents in connection with the project. I move a do-pass. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment for this item? And we don't have any subs on this one either, is that right?
I urge your support.
Counselors, any questions, any discussion? Ms. Harmio, do you have anybody that wants to speak on this item from the organization before we close?
Mr. Ogle, would you like to speak to the council? Mr. Ogle is the Senior Vice President for the company.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So we'd just like to express a lot of thank you. First, we're a fast-moving organization, and so first, I want to thank you for record approval times to help us support our clients. That went a long way. That was a big part of why we chose Albuquerque, that and the incredible labor pool. We've already been a benefactor of that. We've hired all of our local management and support teams, all locally, for our operation, and we're already off to a really good start, and we're very excited. So I just want to thank everyone for not only the speed, but the amount of flexibility and support that you've shown so far.
Great. Thank you, sir. Counselors, any questions? Any other questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, Counselor Basson to close.
Thank you. Unless Counselor Benton has anything else to add, I do urge the support.
Thanks. Hearing that. All those in favor say yes? Any opposed? That item passes, and congratulations, Counselor Basson, on passing your first piece of legislation.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the administration and our economic development folks and AED as well. I know they worked really hard to pull both of those projects together, going through scheduling challenges and otherwise when we get all the way to the end is also a testament to what we will do to get good folks here that will keep our folks employed and bring new dollars, and we appreciate your work, so thank you very much. All right. Getting back to the order of the agenda, administration questions and answers. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? Seeing none, I just want to acknowledge and say thank you, Mr. Rayle. I sent an email earlier to Mr. Montoya, but at the legislature yesterday, we had a lot of opportunity to see our legislators talk about projects here in the city. And DMD, Mr. Montoya's team got a particularly shout-out for a last-minute help at Hawthorne Elementary School in repaving a street and working to restore the sidewalk there after some damage during some weather recently. One of our legislators was particularly grateful, has, and had reached out to us to try to help and do that, and I appreciate so much that they were able to do it, and just want to acknowledge and say thanks when we do a good job, so thanks, and please extend that across. Helps us, I hope, get goodwill with the legislature when we need it down the road as well. Counselor Gibson, Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. So my question is probably to the CAO or the COO, and that is about the gateway. So we're hearing a little bit more about the gateway, and I apologize that I was not at the public meeting when a lot of that was discussed, but I'm still not clear on what the gateway will have. Is this for, I understand, we hope to replace the beds at the West Side Center. I guess I shouldn't make any assumptions, but I think that was the case. But also, we were talking about doing some type of a triage place there. So either one of you want to take a crack at that? Thank you.
Sure. Council President Davis, Counselor Gibson. So, yes, we had the public session for comment, now I think it was before the holiday, and the results of those are posted online, but we are genuinely taking public input to really determine exactly what should be in the gateway, but a couple of patterns are clear. People understand that we need a central point of contact where, I like to use the sorting hat analogy from Harry Potter, but we kind of understand where people need to go. So if a woman with a family presents at the Gateway Center, we can maybe connect her to the Barrett House. Or if someone presents who isn't homeless but needs other kind of services, we might be able to connect them to the Care Center, which is the new name for MATS. We know that there also should be case management and that sort of thing so that we make sure that folks who were onsite and have behavioral health or substance abuse challenges can have continuing support as they work with those challenges. And we know there needs to be a clear exit strategy. We do not want this to become home, but we want it to be a way to get home, and so that means connecting people with housing vouchers and employment and other resources that'll make sure that this is a place where people sort of get to and pass through, which is sort of how we landed on the Gateway site name. We have the online survey, which just closed recently. We're currently compiling those results so that we can share them with the public and with the council, and we'll just continue to have this conversation, but that's where we are so far.
Thank you. So if I may, Mr. President, just to continue for a follow-up question. So the drawing that was made available to us several months ago looked like there were a lot of beds there, and 300 beds sticks in my mind, so actually, I have more than one question. Are we still looking at approximately 300 beds in this facility? And second of all, it did not look like there was room to do much of an intake or triage on that drawing.
Council President Davis, Counselor Gibson, we had sort of a chicken/egg issue, which is that people wanted to sort of have an idea of what it looked like, but we didn't want to go as far as to select a site and do all those things if we weren't going to get the bond money. So that rendering was just really a preliminary sketch. It was based on a capacity of 300 beds because we also had a professional consultant come in and do an analysis of the entire system, and we know that we need at least that amount of capacity just to make sure that we're reducing the impact of homelessness on the community. I think we're still open to other configurations, including multiple buildings on a site, or if we can make that money stretch into also building out existing sites like New Day, like Barrett House, we would love to do that. We're getting a lot of feedback that there is still interest in the scattered sites, so those options remain on the table.
Okay, one more time, I'm sorry, Mr. President, thank you for indulging me. So, but the idea of beds, are we still, is that still a primary goal for the gateway is to provide somewhere around 300 beds or a significant number of beds?
Council President Davis, Counselor Gibson, yes, we know we need to sort of use that money to provide that number of beds. If they all go in that location, I think that was our original plan, but again, we're not, I don't want to make it seem like the community input is not being listened to or isn't part of the process, it really is. Also, as to your earlier question, that drawing had an area for case managers as well as for medical respite and for food, so that conceptual drawing, as preliminary as it was, did contemplate these other services being on site.
Counselors, other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much. We're going to go another thing out of order. I promise this will not be our normal thing, but this is an important one.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt.
Ms. Yar.
Can you go to introductions and communications first?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And so right now, we're going to go to communications introduction so that Counselor Pena can make a motion. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Pena?
Oh, sorry.
We're going to, I'm sorry. Or if you'd like, I can do it.
Yeah. I just found it, sorry. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC1 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC1 is mayor's recommendation of Sam Sterling Architecture for Architectural Consultants for Heritage Farm at the Albuquerque Biopark, 2601 Central Avenue Northwest.
Second.
There's a, oh, you, that's your job. I'm in auto mode.
I know, same thing. All those in favor say yes? Counselor Pena?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R9 on tonight's agenda for final action. R9 is naming the city of Albuquerque's fire station seven the Ken Sanchez Fire Station seven.
Second.
All those in favor say yes? That item passes. Any other changes to the letter of introduction? Hearing none, I move approval of the letter of introduction.
Mr. President, I'm so sorry. Can we take a vote on the first item that was moved?
I'm sorry, yes, I thought we did. It was unanimous, but just to be sure, I thought. For Counselor Pena, your motion to suspend the rules for placing EC1 on tonight's agenda, all those in favor say yes? No opposition, that one carries, right? Thank you. Any other changes? I move approval of the letter of introduction. All those in favor say yes? And we are done there. Counselor Pena, will you take us to item R9 tonight? The item for Counselor Sanchez and the fire station.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me find that place again. Okay, so R9 is naming the city of Albuquerque Fire Station seven the Ken Sanchez Fire Station. I move a do-pass. So, are we good? I'm good? Okay. So actually, there's an amendment in your packets. I don't have one in front of me. I think they're going to be passed out, but actually what it was is that, you know, this kind of moved really fast and we neglected to actually add Counselor Brega, who was obviously an original cosponsor as well, and then, of course, a statement that the mayor fully supports this. So we actually added it into the legislation, so Mayor Keller. So I'll read it. This would be floor amendment number one. On page one, after line 11, insert the following, whereas Mayor Keller fully supports changing the name of Station seven to Ken Sanchez Station seven, and stated, "Ken Sanchez, Council President, was Council President when I first came into office. He helped my administration find our way around city council and joined us to directly address many deep-seated challenges facing City Hall with the focus on public safety, and..." So the amendment will convey the support of Mayor Keller and his administration for the naming of Fire Station seven, after Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Counselor Pena. You have a motion and a second. Counselor Brega.
I just want to say that I'm happy to co-sponsor this with Counselor Pena.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all those, I'm sorry.
Actually, we have some family members here that may want to say a couple of words.
Would you like to move the amendment, or would you like to move public comment? It's up to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Move the amendment.
Yeah, great. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of amendment number one say yes? And that item carries. Back to Counselor Pena.
Thank you, Council President.
We're going to do this all night, I promise.
We're readjusting here. So if we have some of the family members, if you'd care to come up and say a couple of words, or if you have somebody who's going to represent the family? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Sanchez. I'm Ken Sanchez's daughter. For those of you who don't know me, I think, I think most of you do. Speaking on behalf of my family, I truly, truly appreciate this opportunity to all of these city council members. President Davis, thank you. Clarissa, thank you. She's been instrumental in this. Cynthia, Counselor Brega, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and Counselor Gibson for sponsoring this. I know the entire council has supported my father for so long and will continue to support him, and his legacy is really, is really important to us, and I'm so thankful for this opportunity for Fire Station seven because the first responders were so important to him. There's not a better, better way to honor him, and thank you especially to the mayor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Jacqueline. You almost said, "I truly believe."
Thank you, Counselor Pena. Any others? Counselor Pena, any others before we go to public comment?
No, I think that's it.
And so next, we'll move to public comment. First up is Mr. Tad Naminsky.
My pleasure.
Thank you, sir. He passes. Francesco Artist.
Mr. President, Counselors, I'm fairly new to Albuquerque, and soon as I came to the area, I questioned my sanity in choosing Albuquerque to be my forever home because I was the victim of crime after crime after crime after crime. I'd like to thank Chief Guyer for personally becoming involved to try to make sure that the craziness would stop, and during one of the visits from the police department to take a report, we couldn't see our hand in front of our face. It was pitch black, and I was like, why is it that there's no lights here? And I reached out to you guys, and you guys reached out to me, and especially Mr. Sanchez. There were no ribbons, no cameras, no pomp and circumstance, but he put a light in front of my house. Most people drive down that street now. They just see a streetlight, they don't, they don't think twice, but when I come outside right now, it feels like somebody actually cared, and I don't feel quite so alone, and I don't feel so crazy for choosing Albuquerque to be my home. And that's how I want to remember him, as a bright light, and thank you for honoring him. I'm a nobody. He didn't know who I was, but he's bent over backwards, and he made sure I was okay. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We don't normally allow that, but we didn't really worry about it. Counselors, other discussion, other questions on this item? Co-sponsors? Counselor Brega, I mean, excuse me, Counselor Gibson. I've done that twice now.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Your two seats over where she used to be when I started this meeting.
We're all a little confused tonight, I think. So I just, you know, I'm just so very proud to co-sponsor this, this resolution. You know, I think it's just a perfect way to memorialize a really good man and wonderful public servant, and, you know, because of his commitment, truly because of his commitment to public, public safety and the people who work so hard to keep us safe. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brega, the real Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this afternoon, when I was preparing to come to council this evening, I was thinking about Counselor Sanchez, and it was kind of emotional just to come downtown and think, oh my God, you know, there's going to be a vacant seat, and that seat will never be filled with that person again. And so I did post something on Facebook regarding some poetry that I was reading regarding a vacant seat, and it, you know, it really struck me that literally this person, we will not see again on this earth. But I think tonight with the naming of this fire station, which actually, I, when I was a city employee, helped Counselor Pena and Counselor Sanchez acquire the property and construct the building. So I don't think that seat is vacant, as I'm sitting here thinking. I'm thinking, you know, his spirit is really with us, and I think all of us have been touched by his sort of humbleness, his dedication to our city, and just, you know, the work that will, you know, that he's done all over the city. I mean, we've all been touched by his life, and it's really very difficult for a lot of us in terms of our emotions. But, you know, to the family who has endured multiple months of, of just, you know, kinda, you know, patience and understanding, and to his, to Cynthia, his spouse, you know, I think that, that the naming of this fire station really reflects something that he would have wanted, and he would have appreciated. So, I'm, I'm happy to think that his spirit is with us tonight.
Thank you, counselors. Other discussion, other comments? Counselor Pena to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. What can I say? Everybody loved Ken. We loved Ken. He's just known for, you know, really always advocating for any public safety measure. It broke my heart the other day to know that he couldn't be there with Counselor Jones with the helicopter. You know, it was just really, really heartbreaking because he's just always so proud. And one of the things that, when he, when he did put this effort into these projects that he did, as, as one of his constituents just stated, is that he really did it with passion and with concern and with care, and he really meant what he, what he was trying to do. He really always felt, he truly believed that, you know, that's how he was gonna make an impact on our community, and he did everything with passion. So, I just urge your support.
And Ms. Nyer, anything for the administration? We appreciate the amendment from the, language from the mayor as well. Sorry, I forgot that earlier.
Counselor President, Pena, counselors, we just think that this is the perfect way to, to honor Ken's legacy, and we're gonna miss him a lot. Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? That item carries. Congratulations, and thank you. All right. We are gonna try to jump back into our agenda as it is supposed to be. If I forget something, I'm gonna ask our clerk to remind me. First up, I move approval of the December 16th Journal. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And that item carries. Back to item eight, reports of committees. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, January 15th, 2020, and reports out the following item. In the matter of O-89, that it be without recommendation. I make a motion to accept the committee report.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
That item carries. Deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me find my script here. Here we go. O-72, amending section 1420, the dilapidated commercial building and properties ordinance to implement permanent procedure following a conclusion of a 24-month pilot project. I move a deferral to March 16th.
Second.
And motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
That item carries. Counselor Pena.
I'm sorry, where are we?
Item F, on deferrals and withdrawals, R-178.
Amending the adopted capital implementation program of the City of Albuquerque by supplementing current appropriations for the Adenali Crest View Block Open Space Land Acquisition. I move deferral until February 19th.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? That item carries. Counselor Pena and Counselor Benton.
So, I'd move Committee Sub, R-189, amending the composition of the Board of Housing Commissioners for the Albuquerque Housing Authority. I move deferral until February 19th.
And a motion and a second, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that item carries. Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. On R-210, directing the administration to prepare an update to the city's International Energy Conservation Code, I move deferral until February 3rd.
Second.
And a motion and several seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that item carries. Next up, item on the consent agenda. Counselors, are there any changes to the consent agenda? Counselor Borrego.
Item number...
Thank you.
Item number EC-19501.
Would you add your mic? The staff was having a hard time.
Item EC-19501. I had some questions regarding that, so I just wondered, can we move that to maybe before final actions?
We'll remove that one, and we'll just remind us that item D from consent will come back up for final action. And, remind me. Counselors, any other changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any other discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And that item carries unanimously. Next up, we have, you wanna, Counselor Borrego, you just wanna take that item really quickly? I think that's usually easier for us.
I would love to do that, counselor. So, O-85, amending the metropolitan redevelopment, is that the one you're talking about?
I'm sorry, you wanted to take item D, which was EC-19501, and so I'll move item D, 19501.
Okay. My questions are, and I don't know if there's anyone here to answer from the administration. I hope that there is.
Ms. Nyer.
Counselor President Davis, Counselor Borrego, Carol Pierce, the Director of Family and Community Service, will make her way down here, but...
Okay, I'll wait just one second so she can hike down here. She's in shape, so she can do it pretty quickly.
Counselor Borrego.
Okay, so my questions are, how many vouchers are going to teens, and how many vouchers are going to school clinics?
Great. Counselor President and Counselor Borrego, at this moment, none of those vouchers are going to youth or to school-based. So, I had a little conversation earlier this week, or I guess it was last week, with some of council staff. And just to provide a little bit of background, so we have these Substance Abuse Treatment Provider Network guidelines, and they can go to adult or youth. And they are for folks that aren't covered by other mechanisms like Medicaid or Medicare, or there are gaps. And so primarily, our providers right now are providing those services to adults. But since that question got asked, I did reach out to the UNM School-Based Health Program, and we're now in the process of sending them an application. And they can apply for, to be one of our treatment providers, and then there's just certain guidelines that they need to, to meet. For example, intensive case management is really over nine hours a week of treatment. That might be a little bit much for them to meet. There are other lesser pieces that they could comply with. And I believe council staff sent me a name of another provider that does youth treatment. So, we're doing the same thing. We're sending them the application so we could meet, they could apply for funds. I will say that one of the things that we've done, even though people do have Medicaid or Medicare, sometimes those copays are exceptionally high, and that could be a barrier for treatment. And so we've really expanded that substance abuse treatment vouchers can be used for people with insurance, but are trying to overcome that barrier of copays.
So, you're saying that you have a methodology in place, I guess, for future vouchers to become available? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
I don't wanna put words in your mouth. I'm just asking to clarify.
Chair Davis and Counselor Borrego, the mechanism exists like it always has, but I think with, we are now outreach to more youth providers than the names that you've provided. So, there's not an unlimited pot in that voucher, substance abuse treatment voucher budget, but we do have the ability right now to reach out to them to see if they can apply, if they choose to apply and can meet the parameters. The standards that we go by, they're on our website, always happy to send them, are these national standards on treatment for substance abuse. So, we, we follow those. It's always about to get people access to the treatment that might not, not otherwise have it. But I hope I'm answering your question. So, yes, we will proactively reach out to youth, and historically haven't done that quite as much because of their ability to be on Medicaid, but there are populations of youth that might not have the services otherwise.
Okay. With that being said, counselor, I would recommend that EC-19501, as part of the consent agenda, be amended to be included?
To be approved.
To be approved.
Second.
And a second for Counselor Benton. Counselors, any other discussions? Comments from the administration? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that item carries. Thank you. Thank you, counselor. We are up to general public comment. As a reminder, there is a two-minute time limit for general public comment. The light on the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, and then the light will turn yellow and the bell will ring, indicating that you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At two minutes, the light will turn red and ring to indicate that your time is up. We will get started tonight with Ms. Geraldine Amato.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
Before we...
I'm sorry, Ms. Amato, just a second. Counselor Pena?
Before we get started, and whenever you think it's appropriate, I just realized that we didn't even welcome our new counselor this evening.
We should.
You know? She worked hard to get here.
Yes.
And she deserves, yeah.
Thank you.
So, you know, I just wanna welcome you to council. You know, I know it's hard running for office, and you did it, and you're here, and very, like I mentioned to you before, you know, you being a PTA mom. I'm, I started as a PTA mom, and, you know, it's, it's a long haul to get to where you're at, but very, congratulate you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much for, I'm privileged. Thank you, Mr. President, Council President. I'm humbled and privileged to be here, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve.
Thanks. Thank you, Counselor Pena, for that, and welcome. Thanks. Ms. Amato, will you get us started for public comment?
I need someone to adjust that microphone down, Tony. This one here. A little bit lower. No, the timepiece is over here. No, forget it. I'd just rather be here. Good evening. Today, in my opinion, there's two resources Albuquerque has too much of. Criminal operatives in government and substantial number of cowards. Many of the folks in government that I assess as criminals are controlled by the Bar Association. I was arguing with a so-called reporter from the Albuquerque Journal a while back. He says, "What are you saying? All the judges are corrupt in the Second Judicial District?" I said, "Yes, it's a syndicate. They won't let anyone, anyone else in there." At the time of Patrick Henry, he was, he was a lawyer, not an attorney, and he could go to the Congress and call to arms against tyranny. Today, we have moves to concentrate the control of all local police departments into a central command. That's a move that needs to be made in order to effect tyranny and a fascist type of government. I have cause to file a criminal complaint against a man called a hospitalist, a commando M.D.T. at the Lovelace Heart Hospital, where I was incarcerated for two weeks. And there is no place for me to bring that criminal complaint. He has doctored up about 50 pages of my medical record to discredit me, and he had violated my privacy and my freedom while I was temporarily incapable of protecting myself. I was disabled and flat on my back in a bed where I couldn't even get out of it myself. I was harassed in that hospital. I was threatened with incarceration in a psych ward. And he doctored up my 50 pages of my medical record, and they put those 50 pages at the beginning of my... Everything else is in chronological order, but those 50 pages are... His name is Ramos.
Thank you, Ms. Amato.
Cesar Ramos. And he's getting...
Ms. Amato, we can continue this conversation.
Yeah, that's fine. You can talk around for hours here about nothing, and what I'm talking about criminal activity within hospitals and government.
Next up is Mr. Mark Burton.
And read undercover cop DEA testimony in his book, Deep Cover.
I'm giving, I'm gonna give you one warning.
Yeah, well, go call the cops on me now, right, sir? You ignorant man.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Mark Burton.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Mark Burton, United States Air Force Major, retired, Singing Arrow Neighborhood and Southeast Albuquerque Neighborhood and Richmond Coalition. My family has lived in the Singing Arrow Neighborhood since 1996 and has contributed greatly to this community. I am a teacher and tutor for science, technology, engineering, and math. We recommend city council-approved EC-20-9, Luminaria Senior Community Development Agreement with Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership. This project is proposed for construction at Eubank and Central. I visited an open house at the existing facility, Quattro Apartments, 1319 Fourth Street Northwest, and was very impressed. This project would be a vast improvement over the current condition of Eubank and Central with its demolished buildings, trash, and debris. The developer has already incorporated recommendations by the community for the design. By 2030, New Mexico will move from 39th in the nation to 4th in the nation in the percentage of people older than 65. For the past two years, we have listened to protesters spew their hatred against the deaf, seniors, new community center, city council, homeless, low-income, and panhandlers. City council needs to hear a positive voice from the vast majority of the community. We want to thank the council for voting in April 2019 to deny the lengthy appeal against our new community center, and we look forward to the senior living community project at Central and Eubank. Thank him.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Next up, Mr. Don Schrader. Immediately following is Tad Nemenski.
Prophet Martin Luther King Jr. damned the Vietnam War in his most controversial speech on April 4th, 1967, exactly one year before he was assassinated. King damned the U.S. mass murder of Vietnamese people. King said, quote, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own government." The New York Times, the Washington Post, many newspapers nationwide condemned his strong message of truth. Many whites, many blacks, the White House, even most of King's inner circle of black leaders condemned his strong message of truth. He suffered much hatred, many death threats. Why is that speech far less known, far less honored than his "I have a dream" speech? Sadly, most King celebrations today castrate his message. Sadly, most King celebrations do not emphasize his strong stand against nuclear weapons, against the Vietnam War, against the evils of capitalism and the U.S. empire. Martin Luther King Jr. was a prophet, not a politician, not a rock star. He refused to silence his conscience. He refused to sell out his convictions to get the popular support of millions and the approval of the powerful.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nemenski. Next up will be Gloria Faber. Gloria, if you're around, you can, if you'll come on up and be ready to go. Thank you. Mr. Nemenski?
Thank you. My name is Nemenski. Yes, I remember 9:05, Dalai Pardhan movement. What kind movement? Who, let me ask you. Yes, I, I remember Butterfly. I enjoy it, her singing. Now, learning about her being billionaire. Almost, very successful, and so on. So, now, who is minority here in, who has more jobs in the United States? Who is minority? Men or women? Of course, women. Do we have equality? No, we do not have equality. Do we have racism in Albuquerque even? Racism and equality? Yes, we do have. Who is a minority in Albuquerque? Hispanic? No way. So, I can go on and on. I will reserve later. Now, everyone criticizing all liberal Democrats, all Democrats, President Donald Trump. Well, how about Pelosi? 600 million to her brother-in-law. Well, Donald Trump, president, don't have to use that government... Well, Donald Trump, President, don't have to use that government money, Nancy Pelosi does. So, here in Albuquerque, we have also real estate office city of Albuquerque. Do you think that money doesn't change? No, it don't have to be. All kind, dummy corporation, family through the three, four different hands, money travel, dummy corporation. Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Gloria Faber. Welcome back.
President Davis and the council, my name is Gloria Faber. I'm the Executive Director for New Mexico Youth Soccer. I've been before you a few other times, but tonight I wanted to first extend my condolences to the family, friends, staff, the city council, and for the untimely passing of Counselor Ken Sanchez. I know he was very well-respected, not only in his community, but the city of Albuquerque. He was a strong advocate for the city and for his district, and again, I want to extend my personal condolences. Also, I wanted to reach out to his staff. I met Elaine Romero a couple of months ago, and I can speak firsthand that she is a staunch supporter of Ken Sanchez and is a true believer in helping the community and helping their district. So again, my condolences, and may he rest in peace. I also wanted to take a minute here to thank the city council. You've been kind enough to allow me to speak a few times in front of you. I wanted to thank you for your attention to the city needs and also to the youth sports organizations and allowing us to engage and have a voice about issues. As you know, New Mexico Youth Soccer Association and our partners, Yafu Football, are supporters of the Maisel de Sol Outdoor Regional Sports Complex, and we hope that you will be as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Michael Posen. Following Mr. Posen is Sarah Delgado.
My name is Michael Posen. I'm the Programs Administrator for New Mexico Youth Soccer. Also come here before you one more time. I wanted to personally thank the city council for taking the time to listen to our needs for a soccer complex in Albuquerque. One of my other hats is I am an Olympic development coach for New Mexico Youth Soccer. This last... A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to take my team along with twelve other teams to Phoenix, Arizona for the regional competition. While I was there, keeping in mind that we have these projects on the papers here, I was noticing how much we were paying to Phoenix businesses, to hotels, to everything. So, looking at a soccer complex here in Albuquerque, I know myself, my fellow coaching staff, and all the players and families greatly appreciate your attention to a soccer complex, so possibly we can have other cities come and pay us too. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Sarah Delgado. After Ms. Delgado is Mr. Artist again, so if you'll come up and be ready, we'll be ready to go behind her. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here from Southeast Albuquerque, also the South Singing Arrow Neighborhood. I'm here to offer my support for EC-20-9, that is, the Luminaria Senior Community Development in this area of Albuquerque, of Eubank and Central. It's blighted behind the Home Depot there. This building could be a great opportunity for our neighborhood. Our community is very diverse economically, and our senior population is growing, so this could provide affordable housing for our neighbors so they can stay in this area. So, I just wanted to ask you guys to please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Francesco Artist, and following him is Thea Haver and Kristen Lee. If you've called your name, come on down to the front and take one of those front seats so we can get you ready to go. Mr. Artist, welcome back.
Thank you, President Davis. Counselor Pena, I'm really excited about the project that's going to be beautifying the medians west of Central. I was really excited to see the photographs. I was saddened that Counselor Sanchez was not present. I didn't realize at the time why. One of the things that I was able to gather from the website, and please forgive me if I got all my facts wrong, but I think it's beautiful that we're going to have trees, we're going to have the gravel, and it's going to make the area beautiful, which is exciting because that area is on the rise. We have so much beautiful construction going on right there. It's moving on up, as they say, and I'm really excited. Is there any consideration for lighting? Because it's beautiful in the daytime, but at night, it's scary. Every time I'm driving down there, I am like white-knuckling it because I'm afraid I'm going to hit somebody because there's so many people who congregate pedestrians, and just last week, a pedestrian was struck and fatally... They died. And is there something we could do about the lighting in the area?
Counselor Pena.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I'm glad you mentioned that because one of the issues that we have just in the southwest in general is the lack of lighting. So when lots of the development went in, you know, they planned around the communities that were there, but we have a lot of feeder streets, and it's kind of pretty much dark in our area of town. You know, we had, partnering with Commissioner Casada's office, we had our analysts go out one night and actually do an inventory of some dark streets because we thought there was some prominent ones, but come to find out that, yeah, the southwest area of town is pretty dark. So, I actually have a request, a federal request, for lighting and infrastructure in the district and also a request to the New Mexico State Legislature in the amount of $10 million. I mean, we really have a huge deficit in our area, so I don't know what we'll end up with, but I think we picked our top ten streets, and hopefully we can focus on those. But it's actually pretty... It's quite expensive to put that in, and then, of course, as you know, we lack infrastructure. And then, we also lack some street... Lots of streetlights and... Not streetlights, traffic signals in the district as well. And if you know the amount, I mean, we have in past CIP, I think we allocated some dollars for two, and there are about a million and a half to $2 million for just one traffic signal. So, yeah, we were hurting on the southwest area. So, thank you for that question.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And thank you, councilors. Thank you.
Ms. Haver?
Hi. My name is Thea Haver, Council President, council members. I'm here to address final action item number R-198. Evaluated independently, the building located at 2405 Quincy Northeast is not especially architecturally significant. However, it does represent one of a limited and diminishing number of mid-century modern buildings locally. What inherent value do these mid-century modern buildings have that extends beyond their individual histories, their divisive style, and the businesses that occupy them? Albuquerque recently welcomed the studios of Netflix and NBC Universal. The film and television production industry represents a significant boon to the city. Programs such as Breaking Bad and Better Call Saul have famously employed the city's architectural resources as filming locations. The Sims Building, Loyola's, both of these are filming locations, and they're also both mid-century modern. Mid-century modern buildings might be selected as these types of locations because they're visually interesting, representative of specific periods of time, and can allow a city like Albuquerque to stand in for more expensive locale because of their design attributes. A successful film or television show might not only provide an economic boost to a business during production, but if successful, it can transform a building that it occupies it to a tourist destination. Tourism is another major economic driver for this city. We cannot say that we're investing in the film industry's success in New Mexico if we're reducing the available inventory of desirable filming locations, and tourists aren't interested in just driving by closed sound studios. They want to dine at places like memorable characters like Mike Ehrmantrout Eight. I respectfully ask the council to consider whether attrition to the mid-century modern building inventory is economically sustainable. Please consider permitting a delay on the demolition of this property to allow for it to be thoroughly evaluated for possible reuse, purchase, and contribution to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Kristen Lee. Following Ms. Lee is Joe Hastings, Stacy Chan. If we call your name, come on down and take one of those seats up front so we'll know that you're here and ready to go. Ms. Lee?
All right. Good evening, Council President and councilors. I'm Kristen Lee, Deputy Director at Explora, and I'm excited to be here to update you on Explora and our plans for a world-class cradle-through-career STEAM learning campus in the Old Town Sawmill Neighborhood. There's some handouts right here. We've appreciated the feedback you've all had during the development process, and we're excited to be well on our way to an expanded campus that will improve educational outcomes, drive economic development, and increase family and community prosperity. With the support of the council and of Mayor Keller's administration, Explora has had a record attendance year, serving over 380,000 people from our current home next to Tigway Park. Our mission is to create equitable opportunities for inspirational discovery and the joy of lifelong learning in STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math. We are working systemically with over eighty community partner organizations to accomplish this mission. The simple truth is that by the numbers, kids are out of school more than they're in school. So experiences outside of school at places like Explora are essential components of our youth's education and development. The current Explora is bursting at the seams from the variety of science and technology-rich exhibits and programs we're already offering, and that's why we're developing this campus to house the award-winning Explora Science Center and Children's Museum, ExStudio, a new STEM education and workforce development center specifically for teens, that will be the only center of its kind in New Mexico, and Briante, a museum-based STEAM preschool, serving working families and partnering with local higher education institutions to provide a lab school for pre-service early childhood educators. Thank you so much for your support of Explora and this new campus.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Joe Hastings, followed by Stacy Chan and Erin Salguero.
Good evening, Council President, Council Vice President, councilors. I'm Joe Hastings, Executive Director of Explora, and I too want to thank you and the administration...
Tell Chris not to get comfortable.
...for your long-time support of Explora and of the current project to develop a cradle-through-career STEAM learning campus. Where are we in the development process? Phase one, as Kristen said, is ExStudio, an 8,000-square-foot STEAM education and workforce development center for teens. That's right, teens. We're going to take care of teens who, in some ways, are already launched and yet have so much attention that can benefit them. Working with the city, Studio Southwest Architects has completed 100% of the design development process, including all the necessary construction documents, and we're now in the general contractor selection process with the city and anticipate groundbreaking in April with about a year of construction, so opening in April 2021. We've secured approximately 3.7 million of the 4 million needed to complete this new city building, a mixture of private funding and state capital outlay primarily. ExStudio will provide a whole range of activities, and I'll list some of them: intensive physics, chemistry, robotics, design, film, and coding programs, engineering and fabrication opportunities in a wonderful makerspace, mentor programs, and events that bring together both scientists, engineers, and young adults to create pathways to STEAM careers. Interactive exhibitions highlighting the local STEAM industry and job opportunities, including working with the Water Utility Authority, an extended internship program which employs... Will employ sixty young adults and much more. We've also begun planning the next phase. Kristen mentioned Briante, Early Learning Center, a museum-based preschool that will serve as a lab school for CNM and others. Work has already begun with local early childhood educators, and we are planning a wide variety of rich, science-rich programs that will take place at the center. With your support, this campus will be like no other.
Mr. Hastings, hang on just a second. Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Hastings, for being here, and I just love Explora. I think it's one of the most unique things. I've been to other cities. I haven't seen anything that even really comes close to it, so I'm really excited about this new project that you're doing. And I do... This... I am getting to a question here, and that is, is there a plan by Explora to reach out to kids who maybe, you know, wouldn't necessarily seek something like this out? And can you tell us about that, please?
Yeah, sure. And I'll say, the city is one of our best partners on this. So, for example, in piloting projects, some of which we do now and many of which will move to the new teen center, we've done several teen nights, teen science nights, and one of the first ones we did with the city, gathering youth at community centers and then busing them over to Explora, we had over 700 teens at Explora of their own volition, and it was a wonderful, crazy, high-energy night. We survived, they survived. We did another one, and it was 500. It was a little calmer. You know, these are fun nights, and they point to learning in future careers, and that's the point.
One other thing, and the last thing. How do you advertise these? How do you... Do you advertise through the schools? Or how do you get these messaging out to the kids?
Yeah, that's a great question. Again, the city is such a key partner, working through the community centers, and then, once we get a certain number of teens, then they talk to each other, and that's the beauty. I mean, when I say "talk," they talk to each other. Not talk to each other. Thank you.
Counselor Regal. Mr. Hastings, don't go away. You're popular.
I just want to thank Joe and the Explora Board. I've had the opportunity this year to serve on the board, and I've seen how they came to the final design for the expansion. The process was very hands-on and just really great for everyone that was involved, including the board, and they had different scenarios that they were looking at, and, you know, they were very in-depth about how they involved the participation. I'm really excited about the STEM program that you guys have, which involves schools and involves children's learning, and I think that the work that you all are doing, I mean, we're going to be a first class in the nation. I'm certain of it, if we aren't already. And I think, you know, one of the things that I learned from sitting in those meetings is just the sort of care that they take in terms of their budget, in terms of their partnerships, and just in terms of being involved in the community, and I just want to thank you all for the work you do.
Well, thank you, Counselor. We have a gem, and it's recognized worldwide.
Thank you, sir. I think that's it. Thanks. Next up, Stacy Chan.
Good evening, Council President Davis, councilors. Thank you for giving us this time tonight. My name is Stacy Chan. I am a licensed professional engineer, and I am serving as the New Mexico Chapter President of ASHRAE, the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. I speak here tonight in support of Bill Number R-19210 to update the International Energy Conservation Code. ASHRAE has a position document on climate change, which states, "Climate change is the most formidable environmental challenge ever faced by society." ASHRAE is committed to a leadership role in responding to recurring climate change as it affects the built environment and human health. ASHRAE continuously advances the HVAC and R field by performing research and developing guides and standards for designing systems that minimize energy consumption, reduce emissions of high global warming potential refrigerants, and include resiliency to extreme weather events. One such standard is ASHRAE Standard 90.1, the energy standard for buildings. This standard is one of the compliant paths in the IECC, the International Energy Conservation Code. They work together. Like the IECC, the standard is updated every three years. It's developed by ASHRAE members and industry professionals on a continuous maintenance programs to ensure that we're always providing the best technical guidance and standards. More than the 2018 IECC references the 2016 version of 90.1, which, when compared to the 2004 standard, you can achieve more than a 35% energy savings. And so, I just wanted to say thank you for considering updating the Energy Conservation Code.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Erin Salguero, and followed, last but not least, by Mr. Jim Tilly. Come on down.
Evening. I'm here in support of EC-20-9 in the Singing Arrow Neighborhood area. Currently, there's a contingent of small number of citizens in the area that are interested in only offering negative comments for things such as senior living. There's a blind community as well that was interested in coming into the neighborhood as well. We've been... My group, Singing Arrow, the Southeast Area Neighborhood and Richment Coalition, has been doing our best to provide positive feedback to our Counselor Pat Don Harris. been doing our best to provide positive feedback to our Counselor Pat Don Harris and be the positive voice in the neighborhood. And we believe that the community would be better for the entire city as well as our neighborhood, rather... And we believe it would be best to accept the... Approve the motion, that is. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Jim Tilly.
President Davis, Counselors, I'm last, and hopefully I'll also be the briefest. I am Jim Tilly. I'm Vice Chairman of the Burnaleo County Youth Sports Commission, and I simply came by to thank you all for considering investing in the Mesa del Sol Regional Outdoor Sports Complex. It is a special project, and hopefully it will serve Albuquerque and all of central New Mexico for a very long time. I'm also here on behalf of the Youth Sports Commission to pledge our help in any way possible with the indoor complex that you have planned for 98th Street. It also is a very special project and could have a long-lasting and very substantial impact on the community. So, please feel free to call us. We are ready to help with that.
Mr. Tilly, I just want to say thank you for your work. On behalf of the county, it's a volunteer gig to be on the Youth Sports Commission. There's a lot of work that you all have put in to look at comprehensive pieces all around the county, and it's paying off. So, thank you for giving our kids something good to do and giving your time for it.
Thanks for saying that. It is a crazy world, but it's a fun thing to help kids. It is. And these two projects are going to make a huge difference over time.
All right. Moving on. Announcements. Counselor Ben.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Intergovernmental Legislative Relations Committee meeting scheduled for Friday, January 24th, is canceled. The next IGR meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 31st, at 3:00 PM in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, January 27th, at 5:00 PM in the Council Committee Room on the ninth floor.
The Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Government Commission meeting scheduled for this Thursday, the 23rd, has been canceled. The next ABCGC meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 27th, at 5:00 PM in these chambers. Counselors, are there any other announcements? Hearing none. If it... I think it's the intent of the council for us to take a lunch break at this point, and then we'll return back and take care of our public hearings and final action items. And so, we generally take about 30 minutes, so and so. We look forward to seeing you in 30, 40 minutes.